I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would like to, for the invocation. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our sins, those who trespass against us; lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the glory forever. Amen. Thank you, Angie. Before we go any further, tonight we have a new member who we need to introduce to everyone, and many will know him. His name is Greg Dever. Greg, if you'd like to, just tell us a little something about yourself, let people know who you are.
Born and raised in Bacoseon, graduated high school in 99, left, went off to college for a few years, came back with the police department in 2003, worked for the city police department until 2013, and I left to go to another county. And now I'm on the planning commission, and started at the end of 2018. So I'm continuing my service with the city and with the community.
We're very happy that you're willing to serve. Appreciate it. Glad to have you. And we will be having another new member who could not be here tonight, but will probably, hopefully, be at our next meeting, and at that time we'll introduce him. I've had the pleasure of meeting Greg's lovely daughter and wife. I see them on occasion, about once a month, and I knew he was coming on board. I talked to her and told her we were glad to have you. Welcome. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes, we have a work session October 15, 2018. Does anyone have any corrections or anything on that work session? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
So move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Karen.
All right. Commissioner Dever?
Aye. Approved.
Commissioner Greeble?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Finnixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That vote was carried by a... My vote is six to zero.
Okay. And the next thing is a regular session, which was also held on October 15, 2018. Does anyone have any corrections to those minutes? Or if anyone is wanting to make a motion to accept them as they are written, could we... that? Motion to accept if they are okay?
I move that we accept them as written.
Second?
Aye. Commissioner Finnixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And then we have the work session on January 24, 2019. Do we have any corrections to those? Or if not, a motion to accept as written?
I move to accept as written.
A second?
Second.
Karen?
Commissioner Dever?
Aye.
Commissioner Greeble?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Finnixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Abstain.
The motion was carried under the vote of five to one.
Okay. We'll move on to the audience for visitors at this time. And this is an opportunity for anyone who is here tonight in the audience that'd like to come and address the planning commission on anything other than agenda items. If you would like to come up and address the planning commission, please come and give your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
I didn't see the agenda, so I don't know. I think it's the budget or something.
Okay. If you're here to...
There's one up there.
Yeah. Did you want to speak about something?
I can just make a general statement.
Well, we haven't opened the public hearing on that yet. This is...
What's the public hearing about? Sorry.
On the capital improvement plan? Is that what you...
Okay. Yeah, I'll listen to that, and then you have a hearing.
You'll have an opportunity to speak in the public hearing. This audience for visitors is for if you have something that you just wanted to address, and it's not on the agenda, you didn't know...
I think it relates to the capital...
It relates to that. Okay. Well, we'll let you come up during the public hearing. Thank you. Get her a agenda so she can see. Yeah. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to come up and speak about? If not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and I mean, I'm sorry, close the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearing, which is the next item, and it's proposed constrained capital improvement plan, CCIP, fiscal years 2020 to 2024 and beyond. Can we have...
Yes. The planning commission, having looked at the... ...located minutes from January 24, 2019, and it is the information... ...we have a presentation at the last work session back in January. The opportunity was given to the planning commission members at that time to answer any questions, make any clarifications. What I have for you now is the public hearing. The only thing that really changed last month is your notice memo that was put in the packet that addresses a few schools and projects.
Okay.
With that, I will...
All right. Okay, then we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this. And at this time, if you would like to come forward and make a statement on this, feel free to come up, give your name and address, please.
I don't think I know what I'm talking about with the... I'm just going to make my concerns, for planning concerns.
What is your name?
Randy Tress Trail, 212 Beach Road.
Thank you. All right.
Go ahead. My concern is the infrastructure planning and the rate at which it's planned to be implemented. I'm concerned about the storm, you know, the increasing storms and that type of thing. So I wasn't sure on the timing of the planning. And I'm also concerned, and I talked to Lee a little bit about this, about site planning ordinances. And I've spoken to Karen and Randy about it as well. We are, in this community, we're having a lot of people build up their sites. And Mr. Travis, you might be familiar with the area down on Pasture Road, where people bring in a lot of dirt, and they build up real high. And I know that that's, you know, I can understand why. But a lot of people beside them are getting flooded. And I don't know if there's anything that can be done with a site plan ordinance, but there's backyards that are just getting inundated. I live next to a property owner who completely cleared her lot with, of every piece of vegetation that was there. And then she bought in dirt, and my backyard is just inundated all the time. And I have, I plant trees. I mean, I'm planting a forest there, and I'm still getting inundated. And I'm sure that other people are experiencing the same thing. And there are people in my neighborhood who are experiencing the same thing. So I just want you to know that that's an issue. I don't know how it fits in with the capital improvement or the planning. But the other thing is the storms, the increasing storms that we're going to have, I mean, they had, they had five feet of rain in six days in Texas last year. I mean, the storms are going to keep getting worse, and these sites are going to get inundated. So I think that needs to be part of the planning process.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak during this public hearing? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and the planning commission will now take this under consideration.
I would just like to say, Madam Chair, try to clarify a couple of comments that I made at the work session. I mean, I certainly raised, I don't know if we want to call it questions, but from a personal perspective, some comments about the parking lots at the schools and, I guess, the gymnasium, the restrooms in the gymnasium. But I wanted to point out that those were from a personal perspective only. I'm not trying to do that as the chair of that meeting, and I want to, I really want to state that I have utmost respect for the administration of the school system, administration of the city. I know that they work those things out together, and I appreciate that. And I certainly don't want to make any ideas that I am going to be opposed to anything. So quite frankly, I'm very satisfied with the answers they gave, and I would like to just move on with that.
Thank you. Amen? Or have anything they'd like to say on this one?
I would like to maybe just add, sort of from what our... Randy just mentioned about master infrastructure plan. In the comp plan on chapter five, page 24, it speaks in terms of the shoreline erosion around Bacoseon. And I know the infrastructure plan has got a ask that we're trying to include underneath that planning. But I think we are at a, there is a reality where we are experiencing land subsidence as well as sea level rise, and those of us who live on waterfront are experiencing vastly increased flooding. Flooding of the roads, I think the mitigation that we've raised the roads, and I know that will be addressed as part of the, part of the infrastructure plan. But I did want to also echo some of the comp plan, specifically chapter 524, when they talk about the shoreline erosion. And I would like to see some consideration as part of the infrastructure planning to look at the riparian tree buffers, and also recommending that somehow we encourage waterfront owners to really be looking at that as a way to resolve the erosion of our shorelines, but very definitely to try and mitigate flooding. The other, the other piece of, I guess, recent information, if you've been making attention with the daily press, cities of Hampton and also Williamsburg very recently had a series of meetings, it's called the Dutch Dialogues, looking at how we can build shoreline resiliency in all of our communities. And as we all know, we don't have a giant border that encapsulates Bacoseon, but hopefully we can encourage cooperation and collaboration with our neighbors, start talking in terms of how can we go about... ...the erosion and certainly the coastal flooding that we're going to experience. As part of the comp plan, we identified approximately 574 docks, private docks, that are currently in the city, and 63 boathouses. Idea of oyster gardening is not a wacky, lefty idea. There is incredible science that has been now, looking at oyster gardening as doing two things. One, stabilizing shoreline, but more importantly, what's facing Bacoseon right now is the TMDL situation where we are under the gun to try and improve our water quality runoff from our city. And so I'd like to see some sort of attention during the structure plan to be looking at those areas that we can not only enhance the TMDL requirements that are coming to us and very expensive, but we can be looking at also some inexpensive options that we can encourage our citizens to get behind. So the other area that we had also looked at with the comp plan was the retention ponds that are part of homeowners associations. That's contributing to our TMDL overload, shall we say. And I think also folks from private homeowners association could be really encouraged to increase the vegetative buffers around those retention ponds, again, in the, in the hope to include and increase and improve the water quality that ponds actually drain out into our... So I'm very, very excited. Again, I think I mentioned last work session, the wonderful opportunity we have with this master infrastructure plan, I did that it's going forward, and so really going to be looking very carefully as to what the planning, the team puts together for that.
I'll move that we forward the proposed CCIP to city council for their action.
Second?
Second.
Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Finnixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Greeble?
Aye.
Commissioner...
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Thank you. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the amendments to existing zoning and site plan ordinances to accommodate brew pubs and craft microbreweries. We will open the public hearing on this in just a moment, but I think Wally is going to give us a little presentation.
Oh, yes. Got your presentation.
All right, Wally. Take your way.
And I noticed Mr. Straight is here. This is to integrate craft microbreweries and brew pubs into our zoning ordinance. Currently, they are, I guess you'd say, conditional use permit only uses, and that they're not really articulated anywhere in the zoning ordinance, although a main brewery is actually articulated in research and development. But that's obviously bigger than what we're talking about. This was advertised in the Daily Press, February 8 and February 15, 2019, being not properly property-specific, they were dealt with Jason property owner notifications. I'm going to get right to the proposed changes. We talked a little bit at the work session last meeting that a brew pub and a craft microbrewery are sort of synonymous, however, a brew pub is really the restaurant that may offer, that it's more or less the primary use and happens to have a craft microbrewery with it. A craft microbrewery is a facility where the brewing is basically the principal use. There might be a few other uses, such as retail sales, tasting rooms for beverages produced on-site, restaurants, reception halls, and live entertainment. So there's, there's a lot that's covered in there. I'm going to get to the proposed changes, then we'll talk a little bit more about it. But proposed changes in, this should be section 10.2, permitted and conditional uses, we would add as a permitted use by right in B2, craft microbrewery and 15 brew pub. So they would be added as by right uses in B2. In village commercial, they would be allowed, that is to say, they, the craft microbrewery or a brew pub would be allowed upon approval of a conditional use permit issued by city council. That's much in the same way as the, as the brewery was approved that Mr. Straight will eventually get to. That's basically the avenue it was approved by. But it's important to spell it out because the planning commission will be asked later to make a determination on how we're going to look at conditional uses from now on. So anyway, let's just cover the bases. In GC, general commercial, basically the way that's worded, and the zoning ordinance is all permitted uses in the B2 district, subject to conditions, with the exception of the uses listed below. There's a number of uses listed below that require a conditional use permit. We would add as K and L, the craft microbrewery and the brew pub use as a conditional use permitted use, if that makes sense. Minimum Wall Street parking. It's a little labyrinth theme, but you can find it in appendix C. You go under section 108, you go to C, minimum Wall Street parking requirements. We talked about commercial uses here, commercial and institutional uses, and it's under category C, which is a use with a unique requirement. Okay. So two things to talk about. One is the brew pub. There's a, in any one of these establishments, there is a non-public area, and there's a public area. Non-public area, what we're talking about is the kitchen, any other non-public area, such as storage. One space for each two employees on the maximum working shift, plus space for the storage of trucks or other vehicles used in conjunction with the business or industry. So that's a non-public area. And the public area, in or outside of a shopping center, and we're staying with the shopping center standards here. One space per 200 square feet shall be used for a bar or tavern type use, including outdoor bar tavern area based upon the maximum capacity allowed. Similarly, one space per 200 square feet of dining, including outdoor dining based upon the maximum capacity allowed. I noticed that, just talked about this one for 200 for a minute. That's basically the standard that we applied to the brewery that was approved for the greenfield site, and I'm getting my directions mixed up, but I believe it's right there, which Mr. Straight was involved in. It's also squares with our shopping center requirements, from 1 to 100,000 square feet. So that's basically why we went with that. Some counties or some cities go with 1 to 100, some base it on the number of seats. In fact, we base restaurants on the number of seats, one per four seats. But it occurred that some of the areas may not actually have traditional seats, they might be more of a stand-up area. So we wanted to address that. Wall Street loading space for the use provided in accordance with already existing section 1-08D of the site plan ordinance. Okay. So that's brew pub. Craft microbrewery, not quite as, not quite as involved, I guess. Still a non-public and a public area. Non-public area, brewery kitchen, other non-public areas, again, one space per two employees on the maximum working shift, obviously space for the storage of trucks and other vehicles used in connection with the business or industry. Public areas, in or outside of a shopping center, one parking space for 200 square feet of area shall be allocated for all permitted accessory uses as defined. Now, we have to go back to the definition, and you get an idea of what those accessory uses are under craft microbrewery. Permitted accessory uses include retail sales, tasting rooms for beverages produced on-site, excuse me, restaurants, reception halls, and live entertainment. Several things that were brought up at the work session, I wanted to address as well. I don't have a slide for them. As we mentioned at the work session, there's plenty of guidance in the comprehensive plan for this, both in the economic section and in the land use section. Of course, our, what's rapidly becoming our favorite strategy in chapter eight talks about reviewing and updating the city's zoning subdivision site plan and sign ordinances to ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices. We don't really have anything on craft microbreweries right now or brew pubs. A lot of our neighbors have already gotten on the bus, so to speak, towards doing this, and some of the literature I gave you, I think clearly indicates that there's an economic benefit to these types of businesses where they are located, which would refer back to chapter four and the economics. Let me see here. I wanted to address, we talked a little bit about loading last time. That was a concern. What I did, and I didn't mean to be just, you know, terribly, you know, numbers driven on this section, but I did want to include something on loading. Staff use the maximum capacity allowable by the state, which is that 15,000 barrels. Okay. We figured how many gallons that was, and I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but divided by 260 based on a five-day work week. So, you know, we, if anything, that actually puts the daily production up. And again, this has to be a full-throttle microbrewery we were talking about here. 75% of microbrewery production is for all-site use, which basically comes out to 298 cases per day is possible. That can easily fit onto a truck. There were some concerns about the number of loading spaces, the number of trucks. So I think that pretty much addressed that concern. We also talked a little bit about a conditional versus a permitted use. I think it's important to realize that the general commercial and the village commercial districts are gateway districts. I think we all know that from experience on several other cases. That may involve travel along roads other than a main commercial corridor like With Creek Road. Most of our B2, if you look at it, with some exceptions, but most of it is off of With Creek Road. Victory Boulevard is considered a gateway road. So even though it is basically our way in and out of town, it's a gateway road. It's not, it's certainly not as wide as With Creek Road and cannot handle as much traffic as With Creek Road. Therefore, limiting the potential conflicts of higher intensity uses can be accomplished through the conditional use permit process. B2 is our highest intensity zoning district. It is the district that has the most direct access off of With Creek Road, by and large, with several exceptions down towards the marinas. So it's in the B2 that higher traffic uses are contemplated due to the ease of access, and I use With Creek Road as an example. The other districts, you know, you may, you may have to take some side roads to get there. They're not as easy. Or they may come directly out onto a gateway road such as Victory Boulevard. So those are areas where we really want to have additional scrutiny on an application to make sure that the traffic patterns are going to fit, and, and, you know, the overall intensity of the use is going to fit in. And I think you saw that happen with the brewery that we approved in Village Commercial just over the way. So with all that said, it is staff's approval opinion that the proposed uses will pose no adverse effects. Also, as we talked about last time too, remember that they will have to comply with all Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control regulations as are applicable. With that said, I'll be quiet and take any questions you have.
Wally? Okay. At this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. So if anyone would like to address the planning commission regarding, please come forward. Give us your name. Okay. Looks like nobody wants to come up and speak to us on... If nobody wants to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and take this under consideration.
Hey, I actually, Chairwoman, I did some research, and I would actually like to also address some of the loading and some of the potential impact. And during the work session, I voiced the opinion that I think that the village commercial is indeed possibly a good spot to have a microbrewery, because it seems to fit with the theme of a village commercial, you know, kind of a community hub type, type place. So I went and did a little bit of research. I went over to Capson Brewery, which is really close by. It's a relatively small brewery. They're in like a little strip mall area just outside of, kind of by NASA. And I spoke with Adam Connolly, who's their taproom manager, and asked him about their production, and I inquired about how intensive, how many trucks they get. So that particular brewery, he said they get maybe a delivery, maybe once a month of a couple of pallets. They get a lot of their supplies just by mail. They don't have big trucks come. When they get a delivery, it might be a box truck. They don't, I mean, they probably have less impact than a restaurant would. Now, I did look at their license and saw that there was a stipulation on the license that it was 500 barrels or less annually. So I went to the VABC website and did a little bit of research on it and saw that a lot of the microbreweries that I would consider fitting into perhaps a Village Commercial district. Bull Island Brewery, 500 barrels or less, Capston, 500 or less, Vanguard, 500 or less. You get into St. George, that's 500 to 10,000 annually. Oozel Finch, up to 10,000. Williamsburg Ale Works, up to 10,000. Tradition, up to 10,000. So you can see based on the license how they are capped. And I, for me, for these ones with the smaller license, the 500 barrels or less, I think they would basically have just as much of an impact on Village Commercial and on loading and on traffic as a restaurant, if not less. And I think that it would serve to be a community hub and a social gathering site, and I think that they do contribute to the community through the trivia nights or the yoga and things like that. And I think that having less of a hurdle for something that size, having a license that's 500 barrels or less annually, I think removing that hurdle, if they want to go to the Village Commercial, which is, you know, out of Zone A flood zone, which is something that they're very concerned with, a little bit higher ground, a central location, I think removing that conditional use permit process would be beneficial to, to try to get something like a small brewery in Pecosin.
If I can, I didn't, we have not prepared our remarks together. But my comment is going to be somewhat like along the same line of manages. If I read the permitted uses under Village Commercial correctly, restaurants and bars are permitted in Village Commercial. Now, what in the world is the difference between a bar and a brew pub? Other than you're mixing a little bit of beer in the back? It would seem to me that if a bar is by right in Village Commercial, why isn't a small brew pub by right in Village Commercial? To me, it's the same thing, other than where the beer is brewed. I just don't, I don't, I don't see the difference. I'm not opposed to B2, but I think, I think we ought to really seriously consider adding Village Commercial. I hadn't thought about the microbrewery, but I had thought about the brew pub.
And can I add just one more thing too? So honestly, with this definition of the microbrewery, you know, the 15,000, you know, Devil's Backbone, which is huge, and they have a permit that's over 10,000. Now, I don't know if they're over 15,000, but something as big as Devil's Backbone is considered a microbrewery, and that's a totally different level than something like Capston would be.
I've never been to any of those places, I have no clue.
So I have a question. Who determines the license and the volume?
They apply for the license. From what I understand, you, when I went to the VABC website, there were different levels of license that you applied for.
The license obtained prior to doing the press for the site plan?
Hmm, that I don't know.
So the question I would have, we wouldn't know size of the, ahead of time, or would we?
Well, if we had, no, but if you limited on the ordinance, instead of saying 15,000 or less, you limited it to, depending on which zone, 500 or less.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you would have grades of microbrewery? And that would be dictated by their ABC license?
Yes, indeed.
They may not know that before the site plan.
I, so I would imagine that if they are going in and if they're wanting to have something, they will have a fill if they're going to be brewing 500 barrels or less a year versus 1,000 barrels or less a year, yeah. Or they would just self, if they know, hey, I'm going to go into this, I'm interested in going into Village Commercial, this is what I need to be, I need to be a small brewery, I need to be a community hub, I need to brew 500 or less.
Are you advocating then, less than 15,000 barrels?
Uh, for, I would say for Village Commercial, absolutely. And I would say, I would propose that they could go in by right if it was 500 or less in Village Commercial, because it would be a relatively low impact.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we can enforce. If they get an ABC license that's up to 500, that would be part of what we approve as part of the site plan.
Was the only one that had over 10,000?
Um, that, that was one that I knew was big, so I'd like, there's probably a lot that are, I mean, Anheuser-Busch is over 10,000, I looked them up, and they're over 10,000. So I was just kind of looking at ones that I was familiar with, just to see.
Right. Well, Traditions, I mean, Iphone has been bought out, I think by, and.
They still had a license.
They still have Devil's Backbone, but it's not suggested.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm saying, so the definition here is 15,000, and that would be, okay.
We could see if Mr. Straight would be willing to come up and maybe he could answer some of these questions or clarify for us. Come up, sir, and see what you can add to this conversation. Give us your name.
Hi, Sam Straight, 196 Odd Road. As probably all of you know, I've been desperately trying to get the brewery open over here on the piece of property nearby. And I think I can answer a lot of the questions that you're talking about. So one of the things that's kind of unusual about the industry, the brewing industry, is that, especially the craft brewing industry, is these definitions have been changing a lot, especially over the last couple, couple of years as the, the industry's expanded and more people have been entering it and that sort of thing. Even the idea of a microbrewery being able to make 15,000 barrels a year, that's actually being set by Sam Adams because they want to be considered a microbrewery, even though they're pretty big and national and maybe even international. As you, as you found, most of the craft breweries in the area, and most of the ones that I know, actually nationwide, don't produce anywhere near that kind of amount of beer. They just don't have the capacity, the manufacturing, the bottling, or canning lines, all that kind of stuff. And that takes a lot more infrastructure and space than I think anything around here would be suitable for, honestly. And that should probably, I mean, a big, huge line like that would be comparable, say, to something like that up in Anheuser-Busch, up in Williamsburg, and, you know, I don't think there's space around here in the, in the industrial area for something like that The, so the limits, like the 500 barrel limit, that's, that's something right now that the ABC has set up for this state. I don't know whether or not that's going to be changing, and the reason they cut it there, I don't know why, but it's actually a difference in the, the cost of the license. So if you want to brew more than 500 barrels annually, there's a really significant jump in the cost of the license. It goes from a couple hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars annually. So it's a, it's a new production cost. And so if you're not going to exceed it significantly, you're not going to be able to really recoup that extra investment. So it's hard to say whether setting it an arbitrary limit or not would be a good idea or a bad idea. One thing that I've seen other municipalities do, including around here, like I know, for example Hampton, they have, they have breweries and brew pubs approved in a number of their zones, some by right and some basically with an asterisk next to it, which means it's allowable but with review of, you know, the city of the actual plan. So I don't know if you might want to think about something like that, you know, especially if it exceeds a certain limit, whether that's going to be something the city wants to see. Because the thing is, you don't want, in my opinion, especially as, with my selfish, selfish nature here, I want to be able to build my business as I see fit, so long as I have the, you know, ability to do so on the, on the property that I'm developing. And I, and I'll try and cram as much production into that space as I can, and you can get a lot of beer out of, out of a small space. 500 barrels is an awful lot of beer, which is why most of these places have, have got the smaller license. And I honestly don't see my brewery going anywhere near that potentially for years, if at all. Really depends on how wonderful my beer is. So, I don't know. I know, like I said, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the issue itself, or clarify anything that you're thinking about, as far as what the industry does or thinks about it, or how the ABC stuff works. I mean, I've been memorizing these things for a while now.
My thought is, is that 15,000 barrels of beer is a lot of beer.
Yeah.
Most of the craft breweries are, as you have said, are not for that. And I've visited most of them, and when I see 15,000 barrels, I don't know that that's a Village.
No, and I, I agree. I'm, I'm not recommending 15,000 for Village Commercial, I'm recommending 5,000 or less for Village Commercial.
That's what I'm saying, if, if the ABC, they've set 500 as sort of a benchmark, and then it jumps to a significant amount.
Goes from 500 to 10,000. Yeah, is the next, that's the next, next level.
That's what St. George has, is that one.
Yeah, because they're a big, they're a contract brewery.
Back in the middle of a commercial industrial park too, where, oh.
But just to give you a sense of scale there.
I mean, if I were, if I were to build something with that capacity here, like, I would probably have to take over the farm production space, right? I mean, to put something that, with that capability into Pecosin in a B2, for example, is I'd literally need that much square footage. I mean, you know, 10 to 20,000 square feet easily. Most of the places, like, including mine, are, I mean, the one is here is 6,500 square feet, so it's not exactly, you know, a giant warehouse. And, you know, we're limited to only half that for production space anyway, so.
I think for St. George, if there's trucks going in and out, it wouldn't be any, any different than any other spec in that park, but in here, I.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that five, there are 500 to 10,000. I'm not saying put that in Village Commercial, I'm saying limit, if, if they have the 500 or fewer, then that would be more applicable to Village Commercial, even probably a business district.
It's probably more in line with the craft breweries as a whole. Would you agree around in this area?
For the most part. I mean, I would say if you wanted to, if you wanted to set an arbitrary number, I would say probably double that to 1,000. And the reason for that would be, not all the beer, if you really want your brewery to grow and be a stable financial venture, you need to do some distribution after the first couple of years, and you need to produce excess, excess capacity than what you're actually selling out the door. And that requires you to do some extra production that actually gets bottled or canned, usually with a mobile system that's brought in for the day and then taken away, and then that distribution then can happen to expand the business, so.
I'm not even opposed to 1,000, based on what you're.
Yeah, I mean, more than that, it'd be, it's hard to, honestly hard to imagine a lot of places exceeding that around here. They just don't have the, the space. I mean, even the places that have now moved into bigger ventures, like Big Ugly just built a new facility down in Chesapeake area, started off in a very small location, and even their big ones not going to be able to do more than, I think, 1,000 barrels, so.
If I could speak a little bit to the way this is currently phrased, when we were discussing it, I supported having it as a conditional use in GC and VC for a couple of reasons. One being that, in our B2 district, almost all of our B2 zone parcels are directly fronting With Creek Road, which is our major arterial road and is more than equipped to handle bigger commercial uses. When you get into GC and Village Commercial, those have different, more site-specific characteristics which might cause people to lie and look at more restrictive uses. GC is in the big woods, in the gateway to the city. Village Commercial is a lot of parcels which are on smaller roads, such as Alpha Street, Beta Street, City Hall Avenue. It is also mostly undeveloped, and I would say maybe a little bit in flux, considering we only have a few buildings, we're not really sure what Village Commercial will look like. Therefore, keeping these as conditional uses allows there to be a process whereby an applicant would bring in a site plan, conceptuals, and some idea of what that business would look like, so that instead of having to try and quibble over these shifting definitions of quantities of barrels and all these different things which are changing all the time, we would simply rely on the CUP process to determine whether that use would be appropriate for those districts.
Oh, and I, I think what Bill had touched on, having a bar allowed, having a restaurant allowed, I think having a small brewery and taproom allowed fits in that. I don't think it would have any more impact if it was a small one than, than a restaurant would. And I think having that extra restriction of going through the conditional use process could be detrimental. I think they might say, okay, well, then I'll go to York County, especially because I know they want to stay out of the flood zone, so they probably want to be on this side of With Creek as much as possible, and, and it's, I think a lot of this area is Village Commercial or general commercial, with some business commercial, or some, some parcels, but I just think that would be an extra step that they might not want to take to, to go that.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Angie saying that. I'm not talking about microbreweries, I'm talking about the brew pubs for the definitions that you've given us here. And I would hate to have to defend a decision that said you can have a bar in Village Commercial but not a brew pub. I don't know how I would defend that, if somebody asked me to defend that decision. I don't see how I'd do it.
Well, the brew pub using beer where the restaurant is not.
A restaurant bar.
Well, even a bar, I mean, they're not manufacturing beer, like.
I, I understand that, but the definition of the brew pub is primarily a restaurant that, that produces a little bit of beer in the back and serves a beer. You know, the brew pub generates their own beer, the bar buys it by the case of pay state tax. To me, I, to me, it's the same thing. Not having visited all the ones in the local area. That's my, that's my gut feel without any personal, no, so maybe I should keep my mouth shut since I have not looked at them.
Well, not knowing what DC, as you said, is going to look like, I mean, we really don't know, do we? What, haven't seen any site plans, or at least I haven't, and they may be out there.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're hanging up on, you know, not legacy. This is Village Commercial over here.
Yeah.
You know, we've got a, we've got a restaurant right over here in Village Commercial, right now, the.
Bistro.
Right, right.
So, I mean, you know, we do have some Village Commercial properties, and right now, I could legally open, well, they have opened a restaurant, it's, I could legally open a bar in there, and I can't open a brew pub in there, if they ever build the next three buildings.
Well, keep in mind that Mr. Straight got a conditional use permit for his, because it, I mean, admittedly, there's a difference. I mean, I understand your point, but you're not producing your own alcohol site.
I agree, to me, it's pretty minor. Again, and I want to really make the point, I've not visited them, so just conceptual. I could be wrong and I would accept that.
Yeah, I mean, I concede it's, it's a light industrial operation because you are creating a product, but at the same time, the size of many of them that you visited, for instance, and if any of you others have been to them, the amount of equipment it's used is honestly not significantly greater than a very large restaurant. So it's, it's, it really doesn't take the, you know, the space and the. So, it's, it's, it really doesn't take the, you know, the space and the, you know, this isn't a factory, right? It doesn't have like a production line or anything like that. You've got a couple of large stainless steel tanks, some of which heat up and some of which cool down. It's really just of when you apply those, those conditions that you get here.
Looking at five hundred or less compared to a big operation.
Typically.
I mean, you could go up in Roanoke.
Typically. Now, I would say, I, so I did get the conditional use permit for the one here, and the business plan I, I submitted and everything that's, that's on record is, we have potential to expand to a thousand barrels with the system we're, we're purchasing for there. We'll, I don't know if we'll reach it, but, I mean, we, we would like the ability to get there, you know? That's, that's the thing. And I think, I think most people who would want to do these things want to see the ability to expand, at least to within the confines of their space, what their maximum capacity could be. And it is limited by square footage. So, I mean, you know, it's not, you can't, I can't keep cramming stainless steel tanks into non-existent space. I still need to move around in there, and that sort of thing, so.
If, if I could make it even, maybe try to simplify it a little bit, you know, we might be just making things a little bit more complex we need to, since we certainly have someone who wants to do something in B two. Should we maybe address B two without, I mean, I'm the one that brought up village commercial, without necessarily addressing village commercial tonight, so that we can move this gentleman's request forward, if, if we do, and then address the rest another time, because we might be getting ourselves hung up on something that doesn't affect what he's, what I believe you, you're looking to do, which is to open something in B two.
Right. Yeah, I want to start off with a smaller venture there.
More I think about that, maybe we ought to address his request now and move on at a different time, or you had a work session.
And really, the only reason I brought up VC and GC was that, that an amendment that you're looking at later tonight, and based upon your interpretation of that.
You're right.
He may or may not be able to do anything in VC or GC.
Yeah, you're correct.
At all, because it's allowed in another zone. So, this was an effort to get rid of that. Now, you know, Dan, and thank you, you summed what I said earlier very nicely, and I still think there's some room for looking at it as a conditional use. Now, you know, y'all can disagree and go any way you want to, and I'll certainly carry it forward. But remember, a brew pub is not just a bar, but it's got a microbrewery. Twenty-five percent or more can be sold in a brew pub. In other words, it could be a hundred, or it could be twenty-five. The rest of that seventy-five percent, I mean, they're not producing it to see it go to waste, they're gonna want to ship it out somewhere and sell it. So, you will have some ancillary traffic other than just a restaurant. That's, that's all that I think Dan and I were trying to say. But as long, you know, that, that's our piece, I guess, and we'll, we'll carry it forward in whatever way the commission feels like we should.
I could just say one more thing. I agree with your comments on brew pubs and village commercial. I do think it does sound like an appropriate use, that is in keeping with the intent of this district. The trouble is that, as of this moment, there are very few buildings actually built in village commercial. In B two, it is largely a developed commercial strip, and therefore, people who want to build a brewery or a brew pub in that district would be limited by what commercial buildings already exist. So, there really isn't that much issue in, in specifying what can and cannot be built. In village commercial, yeah, there are no existing buildings. There is really not that much space there, so someone could be wanting to have a very small brewery or a very large one. And so, if we allow it by right, without a conditional use process, we would need to go down the rabbit hole of, as we were saying, specifying what uses would be appropriate or not, and that would be a, yeah, that would be a very interesting...
Well, we're cap the production to five hundred, and then, and the brew, any sort of brewery or anything in the village commercials still at least has to go through the architectural review board and that, too, right?
Brew, yes.
It's just gonna be the outside.
Based on a lot of this on what we anticipate DC to look like, and it may not come to fruition. I mean, we don't know, I mean, we know what we, I think what we'd like to see there.
I may get shot down, but I, in order, just to, because you're right, I would like to propose that we vote on or approve the text amendment with the exception of the last, I didn't count the words, the part about a conditional use permit in village commercial and general commercial, and let's address that at a later time. If you take everything else in that paragraph and drop off the last, last line, I don't think we have any argument.
Don't even address BC and GC.
Yeah, just, that's what I said, don't, let's not even address them right now.
Right.
I do agree we need to address them. I do think we would, we would, but I, I'm afraid we might be mixing, not necessarily mixing apples and oranges, but we might get ourselves hung up on something. But I'd like to address the gentleman's request in B two and see if we can move that forward to city council, while we wrestle on the other questions.
Before you make the, or did you already move?
Well, I moved, but nobody's, nobody seconded, so.
Um, so even with that in the, is it the B, the B two, we still have, hey, this is fifteen thousand barrels that's in here. That's quite large, up to fifteen thousand. So, if, if the commission is good with having that stipulation be so large, the fifteen thousand, I think they would be, the existing commercial space, they might be limited to that. I don't know if we want to go that big, but that's something that we want to consider, because fifteen thousand is a lot of beer.
Yeah, but the definition does require them to get an ABC license, and from what I understand, the licenses are different.
That's the maximum that you can do and still be called a microbrewery.
So, they could get the ten, over ten thousand barrel a year license and qualify as long as they're, yeah, between ten...
It is true that there's a real spatial constraint on somebody with the fifteen thousand, because, you know, I wanted to take the worst, I don't track on last time. So, I agree that fifteen thousand barrels is a lot of barrels. I don't have a problem in...
I was just hoping B two, where is exactly B two?
That's right.
I don't know how to quantify it. I'm just gonna shoot the numbers like that.
That's residential.
The gentleman can move on, and we can address him there.
Yeah, because we're getting to... That's multiple residents, yeah, that's right here.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so the red is B.
All right, so to kind of draw this together, we're kind of in agreement that we think probably right now, we want to just address B two.
Well, I made a motion to...
We made a motion, yeah, on the question.
I don't know that we even have anywhere that would handle an operation that could produce fifteen, do we? Do we have anywhere in B two that would even accommodate that kind of production?
Farm fresh, maybe?
Mr. Straight mentioned the...
Well, I guess farm fresh, you're right.
That would be the only...
Unless it was new.
You'd be tight in there.
Be tight in there for fifteen thousand?
Yeah. Mostly fifteen thousand.
And so, where does the fifteen thousand come from, Wally? I mean, is that something you've researched from?
It's a state code definition.
Oh, okay.
Craft microbrewery, yeah. It's consistent with how other places have...
Have them.
Two, and it's still under the constraint of what they go with, with the state.
Right. It's either five hundred or significantly...
Five hundred, two, was it a thousand?
Ten thousand.
Oh, ten thousand, yeah, you said it was a, it was a big jump.
Yeah.
So, what we've got here, oh...
Little B two, I just...
I, I just don't, I, I understand the comments and numbers, I have a, I can't wrap myself around a mental picture of the differences in numbers. I feel like I'm sort of throwing darts at the wall and see what number comes up now, and I just assume, leave the number that is a, is a standard, accept the definition until we have some reason to change it. That's my opinion.
All right, so you're good with your recommendation, which is to strike out the VC and the DC.
Strike out the conditional, the conditional use permit part, and just go with the rest of it.
Just go with the B two.
You know, if somebody comes in and wants to put in fifteen thousand barrels, I'm sure they're gonna require some more permits besides this.
All right. So, so with Bill having that motion, do we have someone that is willing to second striking GC and VC?
I write in B two. I'll second it.
Okay. Karen, take the vote.
Aye.
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 Bishop Penixen, aye.
Bishop Travis, aye.
Chairman Schreiber, aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you.
I'll just be B two, no BC.
Just B two.
Good time being.
With the thought that we'll revisit the VC.
Yeah, we're gonna take it up, probably at a work session. All right, so we'll go on to the next item, which is the amendment to section one dash eight of the zoning ordinance to clarify requirements for applications for uses not specifically permitted. Wally?
Okay. On top of everything else we talked about tonight, I'm gonna ask y'all to make an interpretation and try to give you some good background for it. Currently, section one dash eight, application for use not specifically permitted states, if in any district established under this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted and an application is made by a property owner to the zoning administrator for such use, the zoning administrator shall refer the application to the planning commission, which shall make its recommendations to the city council within sixty days. We've had a lot of discussion around here about what the word "any" means, you know, it's really just not worth getting into it. So, in that case, we've got two options here. One is, as I explained in the memo, is, can be think, can be thought of the one that maybe follows what our practice has been up until recently. I don't know if our practice is right or wrong necessarily, but it's what it's been. That's one of the decisions you're making tonight. We would change the wording to if, comma, within a particular zoning district established under this ordinance, a particular zoning district, a use is not specifically permitted and an application is made by a property owner, the zoning administrator, is referred to the planning commission, makes its recommendations to city council within sixty days. And I added in, such an application shall not be made if the use is explicitly forbidden in the district for which the use is proposed. That kind of goes without saying, but it's like the tattoo parlor we had a few months ago, if you'll remember, it was explicitly forbidden in VC. So, really, VC wasn't open to it, anyway. Just, just kind of makes it clear, I can, I can live with or without it. But that's, that's up to the planning commission. So, this application, or, or this version of it, would be a more liberal version, I guess, would allow conditional use permits in areas, for example, in, in R one. I mean, you know, if you had a storage yard in R one, under this, under this interpretation, you would be able to apply for a conditional use permit for it. So, and, and I'm sure we've done some others since before I got here that, that you guys would remember. Option two, if within the entirety of the zoning districts established under this ordinance, a use is not specifically permitted and an application is made by the property owner, I'm not gonna read the rest, I'll just read the same. Again, such an application shall not be made if the use is explicitly forbidden in the district for which the use is proposed. What this says, and, you know, I think it's pretty clear what it says, I hope it's clear what it says, but this would be a situation like we talked about with, with VC and GC with the previous public hearing. A craft microbrewery is allowable in B two, therefore, it's not eligible for a conditional use permit in, in village commercial or general commercial. I will say this option two makes a lot of sense when you think about it, because, and this, this is the zoning administrator's interpretation as well, but it, it does, it does make a lot of sense when you think about it, because it almost automatically precludes things like commercial uses from residential districts, inasmuch as, you know, unless we specifically allowed it, otherwise. So, our, our storage yard example would no longer be eligible for a conditional use permit, because in fact, storage is allowed in B two. So, there's your two choices, and I'll, I'll tell you, the way we're gonna do this is, if you guys can make a choice, or no choice at all, I'm gonna take that to the planning, to the city council, and they will rule on that only. In other words, if you were to choose option two, I would take option two to the city council. I would not take option one to them, again. They would actually vote thumbs up or down on this option two. If they thought there should be another option, they would instruct staff at that time, and we would go back to the drawing board, perhaps to something, again, to option one, I don't know. But that's, that's just an example of, of how we're gonna treat this. So, gosh, with that in mind, it's, it's pretty much, we're asking the planning commission for guidance. How about that?
All right, thank you.
I'll give my opinion on it right off the, if I may.
Let me open the, the public hearing on this one, too. Then we'll get right to it, because I don't think we're gonna have too many people that are gonna speak on it. But we will open the public hearing at this time on this item on the agenda, because there is no one that wishes to speak on it, so we'll close the public hearing, and now we will take this under consideration. Go ahead, Libby.
Well, my thought is, is that the conditional use permit, like the storage yard, obviously, if a conditional use permit came through, chances are, it's gonna have so much opposition that it would never get approved. But there are certain, certain, maybe certain businesses or certain situations whereby the residents may say, you know, I think that's a great idea, I'd love to have a coffee shop on the corner in that little, that little house. Like, I'm thinking, just as an example, and I'm not advocating this, but the old schoolhouse there on Yorktown Road, that has a lot of history behind it, and if, if that, somebody said, you know, I'd like to open up a coffee shop there, and the residents around it thought that was a great idea, just like the one down on, on Little Florida Road, I, I think that we should not be so restrictive automatically without allowing the, the people that it will affect, really, to have, to weigh in on whether or not it's something they may want within their, their particular area. Because I think of the one on Little Florida Road, that, that little, I don't, I don't think it's open, I'm not sure it's closed again now, but...
No, the, the restaurant's closed.
The restaurant is closed.
Scorpio's?
Scorpio's, yeah. But, I mean, you're in a residential neighborhood, and I think it was, I don't know, it was viable for, for many years, I believe.
I believe if we, not to get off on a tangent, because that's not what I was gonna say, but I'm agreeing with you. I think if we elected option two, Scorpio's could never reopen.
Right, right.
But I was gonna ask, Wally, I know, if I remember correctly, when we talked about at the work session, you said at that time, you had had a look in determining the original intent of the code. Have you made any more progress on that? I realize that's difficult.
Well, it always goes back to the original intent.
Yeah.
That's always something that we have to keep in mind when we're looking at a zoning. In, in our system, where the intent is not clear, the zoning administrator...
And the zoning administrator in this case has gone with option two in the application. So, you know, that's the, the instruction from the zoning administrator, that's the, that's the, that's the interpretation we're carrying forward, which is why I bring the report tonight, because that can change if the planning commission...
Okay.
We, we are following option two right now, and that is our interpretation.
But prior to recently, were we not following option one?
I think that's fair to say.
Okay.
Sometime before.
Right.
I don't think we've had any conditional use permits since I've been...
I, I, I just don't really kill on that opportunity.
I guess we did have one for the tattoo, Paula, but that was pretty clean cut.
But my thinking is, if, if, why have zoning... But my thinking is, if, if, why have zoning districts if, looking at compatible uses? I mean, if option two, we're really, I mean, a lot of thought goes into the zone city, it's not done arbitrarily. I hear, you know, Libby's point about legacy businesses or opportunities, but at the same time, if we're to look orderly growth of the city, those zones have been created with quite a bit of thought going into them. So if, if there's not the thinking of things already, already in existence, I mean, we've got a grandfather sort of legacy from some of the, some, some of the smaller property owners, which has created a, a little bit of a difference, but...
Well, you know...
Option two gives you the match...
There's this question that, that option two is going to follow more precisely our existing zoning districts. If it's something in, in, you know, B one or, or whatever it is, if it's allowed in B two, it's going to direct... But tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I was, was thinking, if we were to select option two, or if the city were to select option two, and let's use the Scorpio's, that's a real good example, Scorpio's restaurant is closed, if they were to decide they wanted to reopen that restaurant, the only way they could do it would be for us to, for the city to say that you can have a restaurant anywhere in a residential part of the city. Well, there might be some extenuating chances for Scorpio's, and I'm not, not to answer your question, but first of all, it may be a grandfather... I, I don't know.
That's the same it is. That's the same it is.
Would it be grandfathered if it's closed? Let's, let's assume it's lost its grandfather's stamp. Okay. That, your interpretation is exactly correct, it could not reopen a restaurant because it's zoned residential.
I, I...
The restaurants are allowed in DC, as we talked about. And I just see that as either a restriction on growth, not growth, but economic growth, or really sort of tearing apart the zoning districts to have things. And I'll pick another one that we voted against and lost, we have the used car dealer right down here.
Yes, honestly, free throw.
If, if we decide to make that lawful, my neighbor could put used cars in his lot, in his backyard.
They still have to go through the process, it's conditional, the conditional use permit, I mean...
Not if we make it, not if we make it by, by right.
No, I'm not talking about making it by, by right, I'm just saying...
Well, but that, that, that option would say...
The way I read this, that if that use was not allowed in any zone, you couldn't even apply for a conditional use permit. And secondly, if it is allowed in a specific district, then you could not apply for a conditional use permit in a district that did not allow it, if there was one that allowed it. Is that, am I...
That's half right. Let's take a look at the tattoo thing. It wasn't allowed anywhere in the zoning ordinance. That would still be eligible for the disuse permit, except in BC where it's explicitly prohibited. So you can still apply for a conditional use permit for that. However, let's say that you wanted to do, well, let's just use the restaurant example, you wanted to open up a res, residential district or, you know, what have you, it's allowed in other zoning districts, therefore, you would not be able to apply for a conditional use permit to put the rest...
Even if the residents wanted it, I mean, I, I just...
Correct. It just wouldn't be allowed by the zoning...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure I... I would want the option. I mean, obviously, if I'm going to build a, a boatyard next to your house, I would have, that's not going to fly, clearly, but what if it was a use of something that would enhance their community and, and we're all for it, but didn't have that option because it was automatically forbid? I, I, I just don't agree.
Seems to be under option one, is that you would still have the, you would still have the right to look at something, somebody wants to put next to your house, and you go through the, the conditional use permit process, yes, it costs the applicant some money, but...
But they had that avenue.
They just have the ability to try.
That's, that's, that's my preference, because I just find the other restrictive, but I, I just don't want, I understand what you're doing, but I just don't want to be that restrictive to anybody. That's just me.
Is someone willing to make a...
I'll make a motion. And that we go with option one?
Have a sec.
I'll second.
All right, let's take the vote on.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Aye.
Commissioner Grevel?
Aye.
Commissioner Deaver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five to one.
All right. The items on our agenda tonight, so... Communications and correspondence with, from Wally and Dan, Karen.
Well, I can tell you that we've got several large projects that are going to be moving one way or another. Legacy, I believe we talked in the work session, we did have a meeting with the folks in Legacy, I guess it's been about two weeks ago, where they, we ironed out, asked you questions with AES, which, and it seemed to go real well. They were very optimistic that they would have a site plan in towards about the end of February. I don't know if we'll make it or not, we've still got some days left in February. Overarching feeling that I got, and, you know, Dan and me, was that things were moving forward and we were going to get something... As far as Quarter Creek, we did get in a second submission. There will be some comments, thankfully, there won't be... You'll probably be seeing an application, actually, they will see it. The process of extending his conditional use permit. Get that condition, because he's not going to have it built, obviously, by... We have told him that he needs to show some progress on the ground. We've told him about his stormwater permit, state regulations are going to be somewhat favorable to him. Well, I won't say every year, but this year, there was a bill introduced in the, essentially tie any existing grandfather... Finishing construction, which was later changed to land disturbance. You'll be seeing Bob Moses, and I'm sure he'll be giving you some sort of... Boy, I tell you, those are the big ones, I'll, I'll pass the baton on.
Yes, some of you might have noticed that in addition to your packets in front of you, there is a summary report of the 2017 comp plan survey. I believe I might have mentioned this in a previous meeting, but as of right now, the city website hasn't been updated, it still says that the comp plan update is in progress. I do want to update that as soon as possible to say that our process is complete. However, as part of updating that website, I wanted to include a full report of the citizen survey. What's up on the website right now is a combination of the raw data and an incomplete tally of results, including some graphs prepared by Commissioner Emmett for this body a number of months ago. So the document you have before me, you, is basically a couple pages just explaining what the survey was and what the process was, and then graphs of the questions and tallies, numerical tallies of all the answers received. The new information is in the back that is tallies of all of the write-in responses and the comments section. I believe that was tallied by some members of this commission as well as some volunteers from the CPT. So I wanted to have all that together, in particular, the write-ins, which are not available online right now. So the plan is, unless anyone has any reservations or would like to see anything else added, to take this document and upload it to the city website with some new phrasing saying that the comp plan update is complete for now.
Karen, you have anything you need to tell?
Oh, no, we do have to leave the next one, and also a work session before we...
Yes, we'll do, we'll do a work session. You know, we probably got six thirty.
Six thirty next week.
And we will be back on regular, regular, Monday, so heaven will be able to join us then.
Right. So... All right. Oh, that's March eighteen. All right. Greg, you have anything? At the end, we always just ask you if you have anything you'd like to...
I want to thank city council for appointing me to this commission, and I look forward to providing my input to...
Libby?
I'm good.
Angie?
I'm good, I, I appreciate our discussions this evening, and I appreciate this body's discussions that, that we have in general.
I'd like to echo, there was really good discussions tonight, and I know it was a pretty huge agenda that we had to read through, so it, it was really good discussion. I would like just to maybe do a shout out to Taylor Dental Care, the rehabilitated corner lot with Cre... Little Victory Boulevard, it's really been a nice enhancement to the city, and I wanted to just maybe thank the, the owner, it's a locally owned business, and also that they're investing back into Picosin.
Anything else?
Nothing from me, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.